Hello, hello.
Welcome to February 11, 2024, 2025, City Council Meeting, 6:30 City Council Chambers. I'll start with a prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified, and we continue the legacy of our founders. May it be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please do the flag. Praise the nations, do the flag of the United States of America, the two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Belanger.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchere.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Eleven present.
Two mayors visits, 2.1 communication, participation, motion approved by Counselor Belanger, second by Counselor Chow, also fearless AI, opposed motion passes. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. As many are aware, we've started Black History Month, February 1st. In a tradition that was started since I've been on the council, we've been acknowledging members of our community that that truly are remarkable, that truly contribute and are standouts in our community, and keeping with that tradition, tonight, I would like to mention a special guest we have in the house, Masada Jones. Masada serves as the Executive Director, thank you. Masada serves as the Executive Director of the Center for Hope and Healing Incorporated, where her leadership fosters healing, advocacy, and empowerment. She's also the founder and Executive Director of the Kindred Project, an organization dedicated to building a strong and visible black community in Lowell. With a deep understanding of the power of storytelling and self-expression, she co-founded Free Verse, a creative space that nurtures young people's love for expression. She also created a creative space that nurtures people's love for poetry and performance, enriching their lives through the spoken word. Her commitment to preserving and sharing black stories extends her involvement in hidden in plain sight stories of a black Lowell, produced by the Free Soil Odds Collective. As both an interviewer and storyteller, Masada has helped ensure that the experience and the contributions of black Lowellians are recognized and celebrated. Masada is a published author, with her book becoming Broken, 2016, serving as a testament to her artistic and literary talents. She shared her poetry at Black History Month flag-raising ceremonies and community gatherings, using her words to inspire, educate, and unify. A graduate of Leslie University, Masada is deeply intentional about her work, ensuring that every effort she undertakes strengthens connections within the black community and beyond. Her dedication, passion, and leadership make her an admired, respected figure through Lowell. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Mayor Daniel Rourke, and the entire City Council, and residents of Lowell, in celebration of Black History Month, would like to recognize Masada Jones for her unwavering commitment to justice, creativity, and community empowerment. Her impact is felt far and wide, and her work continues to inspire future generations, given on this 11th day of February, 2025. Thank you, Masada.
Cory, want to say a few words? Congratulations, Masada.
I'd just like to say thank you for it to be recognized, it's really an honor. Being a native Lowellian, it's really important for me to participate in all things that are -- sorry, I hope I'm not touching too much over here. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I think that more people, if you have the opportunity to give back, it's really important.
Thank you. Moving on, Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1, minutes of the nonprofit organizations Subcommittee, February 4th, City Council Regular Meeting, February 4th, for acceptance, motion to adopt by Counselor Dakota, seconded by Counselor Getchere, also fearless AI, opposed motion passes. About being 7:00 PM yet, we'll move along to City Council motions. 5.1, Counselor Getchere, request the City Manager of the Property Department provide the City Council with a plan for traffic control on the street parking in the area of 463 to 473 Gorman Street, seconded by Counselor Scott, Counselor Getchere.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. This is one of the first developments that is being done in the MBTA Communities District, and I think there's many challenges that we need to look further into or make adjustments with, especially in our ordinance on the overlays. When you look at the parking requirements, and I think that we need to do more about it, it says, "Parking at a rate of up to one space per dwelling unit may be provided on site such as it is fully accessible to the general public 24 hours a day, both by car from the driveway accessing the public right-of-way, as well as the foot of a level ADA compliance walkway connecting public sidewalk along the primary frontage of the building." This property doesn't have the ADA compliance at all, that's the 1,200 feet over. And when you look at, I'm not even sure what it means, "up to one parking space," there's 39 units being built at this property in this 13 parking spots, so that's one-third of a parking space for each one, at the end of the connector, which is already a traffic nightmare. And when you look in that neighborhood, you also see that there are many green signs that are purchased from the residents for the $120 that says, "Don't park in front of my house, this is my parking space." So it's really going to create more problems than it's going to actually solve on one end. I'm not sure how we can go about this, maybe revisit the ordinance and try to go backwards, because in the MBTA requirements, it basically states that you have a right to build, but it doesn't, it says you still have to adhere to what the requirements are, as outlined in the zoning. But we as a body had changed out on the recommendations from, I believe it was DPD. But I think that we shrunk it down too much, and we're going to cause other problems on the other side. It'd be interesting to see the report on this, on what we're going to do for the mitigation in that area, and what other councilors have to say about this issue.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you. I'm also concerned about this particular area. I brought up during several meetings, the lack of parking in the area with the courthouse when they fenced that all off, it was a nightmare in the area. And I don't know what's going to happen at this point, once those courthouse, you know, gets developed, the courthouse parking goes away. I just, I just don't see any parking in the area for another development. So I'm curious to see, you know, what the recommendation would be to change that. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I also have seen projects that, I mean, I get it, this is MBTA, and the requirements are relaxed due to our recommendations, but if we look at this location, as my colleagues have expressed, there's a no-brainer. I believe it's 30 units slated to be built in this small lot, and I mean, you're talking a postage stamp lot to begin, at a location that is pretty much on the intersection of a highway. So I think this really needs to be looked at. Thank you.
I think the concern is, before we go forward, is that this project is still before the lands and boards of the city. I don't know if the council should be stating anything on it either way, because it has to go through the proper channels. If the issue becomes an issue, which it sounds like it could be down the line, then I think we step in. But the MBTA zoning was passed by this council, and like I said, the project is not there yet, and I've been interested in a pity from this listener's office, I just don't know if it's opposition yet to comment on it before it goes through lands and boards. Counselor Getchere.
Mr. Mayor, I think it just was voted on by the planning board.
I think it was, I don't know if it was completed yet, I think there were some issues, I thought that was left over, with some, what's the word, they add, conditions or whatnot. But the process, I mean, there's no building there yet. So that's my, you know, I mean, as I said, we have approved this, and I'd be curious of the legality of going back on it after we already.
I don't think we can on a current project, as you're saying. But what I'm saying is, going forward, we need to revisit this ordinance. And when you look at what by right means, from the status, by right means that no additional special permits are needed to build a certain type of development. In many cases, single-family housing is allowed by right in more areas of a community than any type of multifamily housing. Allowing multifamily housing by right is important because a special permit process adds time, expense, and risk to the project. And it just simply says, by right simply means that if any property owner follows all the rules in zoning, they will receive permission to build. And in this case, that was the case, because we have the ordinance in place. What I'm saying is, in the future, if this is causing this type of issue for the city with traffic mitigation and stuff, we need to revisit this ordinance and say, okay, here we are. Because it is outside of the 1,200 feet, we designed it that way, but there is no ADA compliance to the MBTA.
Well, that's different than the motion. The motion says parking.
Correct. So it's because of, looking at, again, I'll put in another motion next week that will outline revisiting that ordinance.
You agree with the legality?
No, I agree with you. I agree. Yep, thank you.
So, Mr. Slissa, are you all set with this? Is it something you can handle?
Yes, our office can look into that.
Right. So also fearless AI, opposed motion passes. 5.2, Counselor Getchere, Counselor Scott, request City Manager to drop their letter asking the state delegation to support legislation, House Bill Number HD 1721, and the state bill, I'm sorry, Senate Bill SD 1477, that would ban, Counselor Getchere did this to me again, rodenticide escas use in Massachusetts, no second needed, who wants a first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a tough word to say.
Does it on purpose?
So, so I just would like us to show our support for this. We heard from many residents from New House Wildlife last week, I mean, it was a very touching presentation about what this does to animals up the food chain that encounter the rodenticides. So I would just ask that we take it a step further and we show our support at the state level. Thank you.
Counselor Getchere.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. After speaking to most of the delegation on this, I spoke to Senator Kennedy, and this would be an important piece to try to show that the City Council supports it, and also if maybe we can get the Health Department, the Health Board to do the same. But it's an important piece to put in the package, so that when they start talking about this at the State House, they understand that the council's on board with this type of action. Thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, for one, support these motions, and also support the will of the people who came to speak in front of us last week, braving the call, and we would like to, the state delegation to support this, the state, the Senate and the House rule as well. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Great motion. I thought to myself, I went to one of the local markets in San Antonio over the weekend, and I saw the beat boxes out, and I was thinking, you know, we just banned it on public property. If we could get that kind of erased from the private property as well, I think it'd be a great thing. Thank you.
Also fearless AI, opposed motion passes. 5.3, Counselor Scott, request City Manager to explore and report on funding opportunities for gazebo repairs across the city, seconded by Counselor Yem, Counselor Scott.
Motion speaks for itself.
Any particular gazebo you want fixed?
All of them.
Also fearless AI, opposed motion passes. 5.4, Counselor Scott, request City Manager to explore and report on funding opportunities for upgrades at the McGarney and Olivera playground, seconded by Counselor Robinson, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, when we went through the CPA funding, we talked about how there was not a lot of, there were no open space and recreation programs last year. This round again, there were none again. We brought it up as a concern, Counselor Getchere and I, at the Finance Subcommittee meeting last year. I understand at this point in time, we have a lot in the pipeline due to the ARPA projects, the eight projects going forward, but I would like to see them brought forward in the next round. Olivera Playground, used to have two sleds, two slides on a dirt hill, they rotted out, and now there's no playground equipment there at all anymore. It's really an area that is lacking in any playgrounds for the children in back central. So I would like to see something brought forward in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Counselor, all that money is not lost, as I think every council here knows, that money has continued to be brought forward for following years. So the one thing that is good is, instead of spending $200,000 to $300,000, because we didn't do anything this year, it'll be that much more money for the following year. So that's a, it's a great thing, and I know that the Assistant City Manager has been looking at this, and will give us more opportunity to do something more impactful in an area. So.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with Counselor Scott. Through you to the manager, do you know if we put in any applications for any open space to CPA this year?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. The city did not. We did not put any in. As Counselor Scott had made comment just a moment ago, with the eight parks that we have going on with ARPA, and quite frankly, it is not necessarily a bad thing that we're, that that money is carrying over for the following year. It'll give us a bigger impact on a couple of projects that, I don't know if the DPD Assistant City Manager is ready to unveil what she wants to do, but we have a couple of other ideas that we would be applying for that money in the future as well.
I was hoping that we did, because if we did, and we did get awarded to one of those projects, we could have sent that ARPA money over to the affordable housing piece and held more money in that. So I just think any money we can take from something else and shift and offset to that type of piece would be good. So hopefully, next year, we have some projects.
Robinson.
Thank you. I agree. I mean, there's a couple, even with ARPA, the ARPA-funded projects that are going on in open space, for example, the St. Louis Splash Park, we're going to have families with toddlers over there with no changing rooms or restrooms available, once this is completed. There's at least a dozen smaller open space pieces that could have been utilized, I think, with this money. And I get it, and I know the buzzword is affordable housing. We're going to try to do everything we can to create affordable housing, but at the same time, two years back-to-back, no CPA open space improvement projects, a gauge where low Catholics using that as their JV field, we've been trying to get a small restroom facility type up there as well. I just think that there's a lot of small projects that could have potentially been submitted for consideration. Thank you.
Also fearless AI, opposed motion passes. 5.5, Counselor Janess, request City Manager to engage UMass Lowell National Grid in discussion around the recently canceled National Grid geothermal pilot program to explore what was learned from the work already done, and try to find a path forward for this project or any other alternative energy pilots that may be feasible, with or without National Grid's assistance.
Second, then. I second.
Yem.
There's a registered speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Clerk.
Sarah Lapp.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Thought I was going to have to lean really far over. My name is Sarah Lapp, 200 Market Street, Unit 14. I'll be very brief, but I'm really here to speak in support of the motion, and appreciate Counselor Janess for bringing it up. The renewable energy is really the wave of the future, and we really had potential to be in that with this pilot, and it's very disappointing that it was just abruptly canceled. And I personally is, finds it a little bit disingenuous that, they say that's potentially that it's inflation and the geology of the area that makes a cost project unfeasible when Eversource is doing a similar pilot in the Framingham area. I don't think Framingham and Lowell are that different, as far as geology, although I'm not an expert on that. So I do think that the city should really seek answers as to what happened and to why this isn't going to continue, and what we can do to make it continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Ms. Lapp for coming to speak on this. My thoughts are pretty much the same as hers. I saw it was canceled last week, was really disappointed to see that. I thought this was an exciting project for the city, the university, and the residents who are struggling to pay their energy bills. You know, we see it all across the city, whether it's electricity, gas, oil, doesn't matter what it is, the prices are going up and up and up. And this was an opportunity to potentially send that in the other direction. And so having the project get canceled while the other two pilots, the one in Framingham that Ms. Lapp mentioned, and then one in Boston, continue forward, it feels like Lowell got the short end of the stick again. And I know none of us like seeing that, so I'd really like to have this conversation to understand, what did they learn that made it unfeasible? Are there ways around that? Is there funding that the university might be able to access in terms of research dollars or something that might be able to, you know, help shore up a project like this and move it forward, or something similar? These are the kind of projects that every municipality needs to really be digging in on right now, because it's the only way we're ever going to get control of energy prices. It requires all of us to do what we can. So the more we can learn and figure out the path forward, the better off we are. Thank you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank my colleagues for filing this, and I learned this from reporters, and then I saw this on the Commonwealth Magazine, and I was crushed, because I was there with the manager and the Chancellor Chen at the groundbreaking, and also the National Grid and UMass Lowell came to the council, made presentation. The most disheartening thing is that we have spoken with various homeowners in the area on Broadway, near the parking lot, and they were very excited. And my comment to the sun is that, because this is not profitable for National Grid, so they pulled it, and that's bottom line. And then, like my colleague said, other two communities' projects still going, and that make it even more disingenuous on the National Grid part. And I hope that homeowners who were all excited and signed up for that will be notified by appropriate authority and National Grid as well. Thank you.
Counselor Getchere.
Mr. Mayor, I just wish I could tell National Grid how unfeasible my bill is that just went up double, and all the money that they're running away with, they had the project before they raised our bills to what they are today, and if you ask a resident, National Grid's bills are unfeasible. So hopefully, they can come to the table and do something that's good for our community. Thank you.
Counselor Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to take an item out of order.
We don't have this motion yet, Counselor.
6.2 informational, FY 2025.
I don't want this motion yet. We're still on the geothermal one.
So on the geothermal, okay, I'm sorry.
Also fearless AI, opposed, motion passes. We have one more public speaker, then we'll get to you. 5.6, Counselor Janess, request City Manager to reconsider the winter maintenance policy for the Riverwalk to include snow and ice removal to keep this important corridor open for our residents throughout the winter months. Second. Seconded by Counselor Noon. Mr. Clerk.
Stephen Oliver. Good evening, Dr. Stephen Oliver, 52 Lawrence Drive. Pleasure to be here. It looks very different in person than on TV. As was stated, we're struggling over there with the condition of the Riverwalk. The Riverwalk is such a key asset for the city. It is a very well-used corridor, and as you know, a very large swath of land. We've had two snowstorms in succession. There's now snow on top of compacted sheets of ice. People are doing their best to hobble their way long distances. That corridor, people use it to move from one part of the city to the other, people use it to exercise, I see people jogging out there, which is crazy to me. If you own a pet, walking your dog along that corridor, even from an accessibility standpoint, I don't see how you can make an argument for just leaving it in its current state. And I was here, virtually anyway, a couple of years ago, with this same discussion, and at that time, the argument or the request was, could the Riverwalk be given its own designation, something akin to a city street, such that when it snows, people could have the reasonable expectation that, just like Merrimack, we expect it to be plowed, and all the streets, all the sidewalks on commercial streets to be clear and passable, could there be a designation such that we could have that same expectation for the Riverwalk? So I know it's, there's lots of complexity to it in terms of who owns which aspects, but for a while, there was improvement, and snow was getting cleared. And I don't know what's happened in the last year or so that whatever was agreed upon seems to have fallen apart. So if we could reconsider that and come up with a plan that could be lasting, I know the residents over in the part of the city I live in would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Oliver, for coming down to speak. I put this motion in, in large part, due to a conversation I had with him, and it was not the first conversation we've had. I brought this motion forward a few years back, and I feel like for one winter, we made a good effort and cleared it up, and then we decided we weren't going to do that because we didn't have the equipment or the manpower, whatever it was. And the issue kind of lay dormant for a little while, simply because the past couple of years, we haven't had snow that has stuck around. This year, we're now on our second storm, as Dr. Oliver mentioned, and we're just building kind of layers out there. And looking at the forecasts, those layers are going to get deeper. I know a lot of people use the Riverwalk for recreation, for exercise, for even commuting back and forth to the various parts and properties that are but the Riverwalk. So if there's a way we can put together a maintenance plan, and I saw that those discussions are starting based on the informational report that's later in the agenda, I think that's good, and I think that we really should strongly consider and figure out how to remove snow and ice from the Riverwalk. Realize there may be limitations with, in terms of, you know, salt or chemicals that we may or may not be able to use that close to the river, but there's got to be something we can do to make it safer and more usable for everyone.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Oliver, for coming up here to speak. This has been discussed before, I think, filed by myself, and I think as well as Counselor Janess.
Janess. We should have policies for making that area. I know Dr. Oliver talking about other stakeholders, maybe National Park have a role in this as well, maybe working with National Park and other stakeholders to have policies, make them policy for this going forward. You know, as Counsel Janess said, snow is coming, it's going to pile on top of the two snow that we have, so maybe, you know, if we can rush to clean it up and so that. But this is an area where a lot of residents use for, you know, walking their dog and their families, you know, that areas and whatnot. So the least we can do is make clean that area. Thank you.
Counsel Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Manager, is this walkway belong to the Mass Mill portion of it?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. A little bit of everybody, but to answer the question, Counselor, a little bit of everybody has, we have access to it. UMass Lowell Assistant City Manager Machado has been convening meetings. As a matter of fact, the second one is coming up at the beginning of March for this discussion. There are a lot of challenges in that area in regards to plowing that. It's not large enough. And we also have to be careful about plowing snow back into the river. There's a challenge there for us. It's a pretty long swath. But we are looking at, the first meeting was very, everybody was very excited to work together to see what can be done in regards to the spring and summer version of it to keep it clean. And the winter version right now is throwing that little bit of a curve ball with us to what to do with that snow. Yes, the snow will melt and will probably find its way into the water, but for us to actively throw the snow into the river creates some type of heartache for some folks. So we're not there yet, but it is something that we've been discussing. And once again, Assistant City Manager Machado could, he has an update and informational, thank you very much, Counsel Janess, this evening, and maybe after our March meeting, we can come back with another informational just to update everybody as to what could happen for what conceivably would be for next winter at this point in time.
To me, to me, this is not any different from the sidewalk that the city required the homeowners, you know, to clear the sidewalk every time after the snow. I think we have enough resources to combine all the stakeholders to come up with solution to, you know, pick up the snow and haul it away. Because as the speaker mentioned, it's very important for residents to live that and use it, you know, exercise. And again, from the standpoint of accessibility, you know, that's really critical. So hopefully, next winter, we will have a solution. And I trust you that you will come up with solution, Mr. Manager. Thank you so much.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I know this is one of the areas that we service with the Riverwalk barrels, I believe. City employees maintain that area as far as the trash barrels that are down there. For years, this was always, again, it was prioritized. Walkways and bridges used to be DPW Parks Division responsibility in weather, snow. I don't know why we've gone away from that. It's always been either a little Polaris machine, mini Bobcat goes down and clears that walkway. I mean, it's routine, just like the canal bridges, just like the business district walkways, all of those walkways, it's included, it's a walkway. That's something that I see. It's not consistently happening from storm to storm. And so I don't know if that designation has been made from the administration to a special division that that's their responsibility. I mean, you know, the street department was always held responsible for the streets and roads. Parks Division was always held responsible for walkways and bridges. And then, once they got caught up on that, they jump off into smaller parking lots. I don't know why we're not operating like that anymore, but I hope we can get back to that place. Thank you.
Alvin Ferris AI opposed motion passes being passed 7 p.m.
Mr. Mayor, being 7 o'clock and having a utility public, can we do the subcommunity, I mean, the public hearing first? And then, once the public hearing is over, if we could suspend the rules like Counselor Belanger said, and take up the 7.3, which is the vote for the informational report of the free cash? So if we could do that after? Thank you.
Will do. Utility Public Hearing 4.1 New Singular Wireless DBA AT&amp;T requests installation of one wireless small cell facility on existing pole near 11 Crowley Street. Open the meeting for those in favor, in favor, in favor. Name and address, sir.
Hi, I'm good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. My name is Edward Paree. It's P-A-R-E. I'm an attorney at Brown Rudnick, representing New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, operating as AT&amp;T. I've appeared before the council many times for these small cell facilities. We currently have about 25 of these around the city. In this instance, National Grid is requiring that we remove an existing installation over at Metalcroft and Moore. We found a pole, an existing pole that we can utilize at 11 Crowley. That's why we're here this evening. It consists of an antenna mounted to the top of the wooden utility pole. The antenna is 24 inches in height. It's a canister, so it's round. We attach our equipment, bring power to it, and that, in essence, is what we're proposing to do at 11 Crowley. We'll comply with all of the city's requirements, all the FCC standards, building code, electrical code, et cetera. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor or city councilors. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak in favor, in favor, in favor? The portion meeting is closed. Anybody in opposition? Opposition, opposition, that portion of the hearing is closed. Any comments by the councilors? Moved to approve by Counsel Dakota, second by Counsel Getche, roll call to the clerk. Oh, I apologize. Refer to the line inspector for report recommendations. Great. Counsel Blanger, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think it's been requested that, I'm probably, I'm going to withdraw my request as this is part of a larger presentation. A little ways down the road, the informational, I don't know what Counsel Mercy wants to do, but.
Mr. Mayor, we have any presentation on the free cash?
Yes, we are.
And then there's a vote, and then there's a vote.
Correct. Do we want to do the informational, which is?
Which is a seventh, it's 6.2, but it's a seventh item.
Okay, so we'll jump to 6.2 informational report. FY 2025 free cash certification explanation. Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor. If it's okay with the council, what I'd like to do is present with the fiscal 2024 fiscal year review and then the cash certification, if that's okay with the council. It kind of will flow through.
Got it.
Yep.
So I guess I'm asking first.
By Counsel Noon, second by Counsel Robinson. Alvin Ferris AI opposed motion passes. Mr. Manager, you're up.
I'll let you know right out of the gate.
State, state of the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the council and the citizens of Lowell. In 2024, we took significant strides in shaping a bright future for Lowell, focusing on economic growth, community engagement, and improving our city services. Our infrastructure, along with the introduction of exciting new arts, culinary, and cultural events, have contributed to making Lowell the most vibrant, thriving community in Massachusetts. Good financial management is at the cornerstone of an effective government. This council has been a fierce advocate for strong fiscal policies and has been excellent stewards of the taxpayer dollar. Transparency is at the essence of a strong finance, and the launch of the new and improved budget document using ClearGov software platform has been a critical step in improving our budget document. We have also made our budget process more inclusive for fiscal year 2025. With the introduction through the community input sessions, not only do we have our budget financials online, but all of our city's financial policies and forecasts are easily accessible to the public. Financially, Lowell has had a very, very strong year. In 2024, further reinforcing our solid fiscal foundation, the rating agency Moody's Investor Services recognized this by upgrading the city's credit rating to its highest level in decades, citing the city's sound fiscal management and policies as positive factors. Our reserve position, including the historic level of reserves in our stabilization fund, which after today's vote will go to $16.9 million, more than it's ever been throughout the history of Lowell, that was cited as an important component to why we were upgraded. This upgrade not only reflects our ongoing commitment to fiscal responsibility, but will also reduce interest rates on future borrowing, ultimately saving taxpayers' money. Perhaps most importantly, is the credit upgrade will signal to potential investors that Lowell is worthy of investment for development. This is something that we've all known for ages, but as we stand on the precipice of a historic level investment in the city, this could not have come at a better time for economic development. Good financial management works hand in hand in our community's development. Speaking about the law department, it's the first time in the history that we have fully staffed for the entire calendar year, and this ensures an increased workflow output. From the perspective of early 2023, just right after I got here, we had three attorneys working in our law office. Today, the city solicitor has provided stability for the city at the time when we needed it most. Through his leadership, the law department is well positioned to continue effectively representing the city with integrity and professionalism. 2024 was an exciting year for the law department. Through our contract administration, a new contract tracking system was implemented citywide, which increased efficiency and workflow to the process. In 2024, the law department drafted, reviewed, and executed a staggering 582 contracts. 582 contracts, including $41 million in ARPA funds ahead of the December 31 deadline. When it came to litigation, we also had a very successful year. As an example, in 2024, the law department successfully disposed of two federal cases that were dismissed. The potential exposure to the city was $18 million. We made tangible improvements to the city throughout the year that every single counselor has been pushing for. Paving and sealing 11.7 miles of roadway and utilizing 665 tons of material fulfilling potholes across the city. We also initiated 11 projects to enhance seven schools and finalized construction projects on eight different parks, which each and every counselor has pushed for. We also put $40 million in ARPA funds and committed and distributed to new programs and projects that are already in place benefiting our community. It is important, as one year closes and another year begins, to take a moment to reflect on the remarkable achievement of this city council and the administration that we work continuously for our community. In a city as active as Lowell, taking a moment to look back not only allows us to appreciate all that we've achieved together, but also helps us chart a clearer, more ambitious plan for the future. I would now like to invite everyone to review the video that was put together, and then we'll come up with some closing comments. Investing in infrastructure continues to be a priority, ensuring Lowell's streets, bridges, and public spaces are safer and more accessible. This past year, we paved, micro-surfaced, milled, and overlaid our way to $13 million worth of new roads, sidewalks, and curbs across the city, totaling nearly 10 miles. And in July, we saw the long-awaited opening of the Beaver Street Bridge, a vital link for the sensible neighborhood. The fire department's new fleet continues to hit Lowell streets thanks to a significant ARPA commitment. We welcome the new ladder four, the new emergency one cyclone ladder, and engines three and Sustainability has been a constant thread throughout the year. With energy-efficient solutions and community-wide efforts that span departments and divisions, we are building a more sustainable city each and every day. The Sustainability Department continues multilingual community outreach and support to help residents and businesses save money and make smart, energy-efficient choices at work and at home while securing an impressive $21.5 million in total awarded grants in 2024. The Department of Planning and Development has worked planned for open spaces across the city to highlight environmentally friendly features, such as the Armory Park splash pad in the Highlands. The safety of our community is a top priority. We adopted a new citywide 25 miles per hour ordinance, working towards safer streets for drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists alike. Lieutenant Dawn Beauchamp, the LGBTQ+ liaison for the Lowell Police Department, led the rollout of the Safe Space Initiative. Thanks to her, businesses and organizations across the city signed on to be identified as safe havens for our vulnerable populations. We opened the brand-new Veterans Park at Belvidia, a green space with walkways, a ceremonial lawn, and a monument to honor veterans of all military branches, along with a fresh cohort of hometown hero banners and assistance from the assessors office in securing new tax exemptions for our veterans. We are doing more in different ways every single day to honor and help our community's veterans.
Three, two, one.
We've cut the ribbon on 301 new businesses, including restaurants and services, and continued to cycle through an innovative project pop-up space that has already successfully incubated new businesses and supported their shift into dedicated retail. Out of nearly 200 communities across the Commonwealth, Lowell was extremely proactive and was an early adopter when it came to achieving full compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. We are open to development and already have several new housing projects in the pipeline. Lowell is the cultural heart of the Merrimack Valley with one-of-a-kind festivals, events, and initiatives that attract tens of thousands of visitors every year. With the help of the Cultural Affairs and Special Events Department, our beauty and cultural diversity are on display every day with events like the City of Lights, Monster Bash, and Art in City Hall. This year, we introduced significant public art projects that enriched the city's cultural landscape. Let's Dance Lowell, the first citywide public art project, was created by artist Kit Collins in collaboration with Lowell community members from each of our eight neighborhoods. Additionally, My Beautiful Minds Grow, the city's first street art mural and traffic calming project, was installed in front of City Hall. The city promotes the rich cultural arts and diverse culinary experience found in Lowell, most notably the Second Annual Culinary Celebration, an open Lowell initiative celebrating the city's culturally diverse cuisine at an event that is free to the public. In addition, the Ever Popular Busca Series showcased free performances from local artists and musicians in various locations throughout downtown Lowell. To help further the learning environment in Lowell, the city has partnered with the Massachusetts School Building Authority to embark on one of the most aggressive building improvement campaigns that the city has seen in decades, using approximately 80% of grant funding for eligible costs by the MSBA. With a total estimated investment of $25.8 million, 11 projects have been ongoing this past year at seven different schools. Wang Middle School, Robinson Middle School, the Shaughnessy Elementary School, the McCullough Elementary School, the Butler Middle School, the Bartlett Community Partnership School, and McAvonou Elementary School. The city also developed an internship program in partnership with Community Teamwork Youth Build and Middle 6 Community College Criminal Justice. This provides hands-on experience, mentorship, and career development for young individuals from diverse and historically undeserved backgrounds. And now, let's look to 2025. Very much, Mr. Mayor and councilors. Appreciate the opportunity, and I hope that gives the folks at home just a small taste of what's been happening in a five-minute video. I have to say thank you to Diana Silk, Tim O'Connor, Jim Foley, and Hunter Barubi, who are here today. Guys, thank you very much for the hard work that you did putting this. Guys, thank you very much for the hard work that you did putting this. I have to say thank you, of course, to my team: Assistant City Manager Machado, Assistant City Manager Baez Rose, the Assistant City Manager Baldwin, and of course, Melissa DeRozes is right over there, and the true boss of all of us, Doreen Burgess, who is everybody knows. But together, our success has been monumental over the past two and a half years, and there is more to come. 2025 and beyond is a continuation towards the change that Lowell deserves. This administration, with the support of this council, embraces change. The old saying, "We have always done it that way," that saying is something from the past. Instead of just doing, we now ask, can it be done better? Can it be done more efficiently? When this type of change is instituted, mistakes are often made. Our employees, our department heads, are encouraged to do things differently. Make a mistake, own the mistake, learn from the mistake, and most importantly, move on and finish the task at hand. Spending ARPA wisely and judiciously with mostly one-time expenditures will change our city well beyond 2025. With our new course of change, we have started a catalog of success that will move us well beyond our days. Success in our work culture, employee pay, the aggressive roadway improvement, the park improvements, the vehicle improvements, the equipment improvements, sustainability improvements, building improvements, with so much more to come. We will also aggressively market our city to let everyone know that we are open for business. Lowell is very vibrant, livable, and an affordable community. 2025 and beyond will increase opportunities for all residents, visitors, and of course, our valued employees. 2025 and beyond will be dedicated to data-driven information and growth of knowledge, with the final implementation of our long-awaited 3-1-1 system. Lowell will continue to lead the region in opportunities for our newest citizens and to our senior Lowellians. Lowell will accomplish this through hard work, dedication, and simply not working alone. With partners like our nonprofit sector, our Lowell Public Schools, Middlesex Community College, and of course, UMass Lowell, we will continue to solve the unsolvable and work tirelessly to improve and expand our education for the leaders of tomorrow from pre-K to PhD. The opportunities before us bring exponential and explosive growth. Lowell will continue to be the envy of all. Our entire team is working with Chancellor Chen and her team towards the future of the Lowell Innovative Network Corridor, as we've all referred to as just simply Link. This $800 million investment will look to bring 1 million square feet of development for research, facilities, and workforce. This development will support robotics, biotech, space tech, cyber, and AI, just to name a few. And if Link wasn't enough, following the leadership of Mayor Rourke and this city council, Mayor Rourke and I went back to Toronto this past Saturday to further discuss our frontrunner city status from the Urban Economy Forum. I am proud to announce today we are the first city in the United States of America to be This, this is the creative, innovative thinking that this council has encouraged and this administration will strive to deliver. This future investment from the Urban Economy Forum will bring an amazing transformation to this city. It will increase our vibrancy, enhance our economic growth, enhance our social growth. Lowell will be at the front of creating a more stable and sustainable future for generations of Lowellians to come. Representatives from the UEF and the UN, it is my hope that they'll be here to make a more formal announcement right here in these chambers within the next eight to 12 weeks. The mayor and I have been working on this. This is very exciting, but within the next eight to 12 weeks, we should have, we should be on the world stage. There's no question that both of these major developments are taking uptime and resources from our DPD and quite frankly, the entire administration. However, we're not putting any projects on the back burner, like Acre Crossing that was just completed, Suffolk Place, its new sister building, 33 affordable homeowner units, which this council has been pushing for, 44 Merrimack Street, 50 market rate units set to come online, we're hoping by September, 218 Middlesex Street, another 37 units of market rate, Isabel Lofts over on Middlesex Street, another 26 units, 10 Favor Street, 10 units of market rate, 463 Gorm Street, 39 market rate units. Lowell Housing Authority, right down the street on Merrimack Street, we're looking to help them put 118 affordable residential units. 27 Heard Street is the old courthouse. Our final drafts and our RFP from DCAM, we're expecting that soon. This is just a small, small portion of what has been happening throughout the city and our DPD. With all these projects that are in the pipeline for development, our success is not by accident. This council, I know, is going to keep its foot on the gas pedal and continue to move forward when it comes to economic development. Our city is moving into 2025 and beyond, stronger than ever, with a watchful eye of what's happening on Beacon Hill to Capitol Hill for the potential uneasiness that may come. Our free cash that is before you this evening is poised to tackle some of the thorniest issues that has evaded Lowell for decades. For the first time, we're going to aggressively finance our municipal buildings, and we'll start a preventative maintenance schedule for buildings and equipment, old and new. We will continue to restore our Veterans Lowell Memorial Auditorium back to the shine it deserves. We have increased our salary reserve to start a facilities department at Lowell High School. This money should give us the running room, the next three budgets to absorb it into our general fund. We will increase our savings in our rainy day fund by $1 million. And once again, let's not forget bringing that to $16.9 million, which is the highest it has ever been in this city. From traffic calming to vaults to the bicentennial fund, we're hitting on all cylinders, and we're ready to continue to grow our city. We have not been thinking small. We will continue to aspire to improve our overall quality of life and grow our city. 2025 and beyond is about renewing and increasing our commitment to listening, expanding our vision of excellence in all we do, and excellence in all we do. This is Lowell. It's simply who we are. The die has been cast. Change has been happening. Welcome to 2025 and beyond. May God bless each and every one of you and our city. It's time for us to get back to work. Thank you very much.
[applause]
Councilor, standing, Mr. Manager.
Cut some rest, you go ahead.
It sounded like a state-of-the-city address. It was beautiful. Thank you so much. Well, I know the manager talked about sustaining and preserving and bringing up improvements to our own structure, and I noticed he mentioned the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. There are a group of people here. Did anybody want to speak on this? No. Okay. So, we are going to take a vote on the free cash in this 7.3? Okay. Councillor?
Councilor, go ahead. Do you want to end up? No?
No, just second it.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I believe one of the gentlemen from LM A would like to speak, if that's possible. I can make a motion for...
Mr. Lyle?
Sure. Let me speak. Second, Mr.
Just wanted to briefly express my thanks on behalf of my team and the Board of Trustees for the support of the auditorium. It's a very busy building. We've got a Broadway show there tonight that Jim and his wife are going to enjoy shortly. And it's getting busier all the time, and the recognition of the needs of the building at 102 years old and 100,000 square feet. There's a lot of work to be done, and I'd just like to thank the council and Manager Golden and his team for all the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Young, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank you for Lowell Memorial Auditorium and the staff and all the work they have done, and we, the councillor, are happy to support the work that you do for our great city of Lowell. I was a maestro for the Christmas with Boston Pop two years ago, and I cannot believe how many people from all different cities and towns around us, Maia Chow and his spouse, his wife, my wife and I, I was a great opportunity to conduct, you know, with the Boston Pop. It's amazing, and how many people, when I get out, they're all from different parts of this city around us. I'm so proud of what the team have done at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium. Congratulations. It's our pleasure to support your work.
Cut, Robinson.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to the manager and his team. That presentation was very well put together. I think you touched on, I mean, to summarize all of the work that's gone on over the past two years in such a short period of time so well, I think is a credit to you and your team. Whoever did the visuals to go along with it, amazing job. As I've been mentioning, the communication team that you have put together is remarkable. If I could please get a round of applause for my colleagues for that visual that was put together, because I mean, I think that's something you're going to see. That's something we need to get out there. When we talk about marketing the city, you put together a package right there that I think we could all stand behind and be proud of, whether it was Channel 4, 5, 7, whatever it may be. If I saw that come across, I'm going to pay attention. So, thank you again for that overview of all the hard work that's been going on, and thank you and the mayor for this frontrunner city. If it wasn't for that initiative to bring that back and continue to pursue it, it might have been an opportunity lost. So, thank you.
Councillor Decodo, Chow, and Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can remember with my other colleagues as we were in Toronto and going through the Regent Park area and saying to ourselves, wouldn't this just be great that Lowell would look like this? And guess what? The dreams have come true. For the people of Lowell, wait, wait till you see what's going to happen. It's going to be, and I think City Manager Golden used the word "game changer" when we first started this whole thing. This is a game changer. It's unbelievable what that part of Toronto looks like, and if it could be half of that in Lowell, Lowell is going to be a city that'd be unmatched in this, in the state. So, I want to thank the city manager and his administration. Mr. Mayor, you were the catalyst for this. If it wasn't for you, this wouldn't have happened. So, kudos to you.
Now, I have a question. To Mr. Baldwin, concerning free cash certification, just a number stood out to me. On the FY24 excess local receipts, it was $3.5 million, which I, if I don't, if I remember correctly, that's quite the jump from '23. Can you give us an explanation of where that extra money came from?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an excellent question. So, in the informational, there's a presentation that goes into some of the details about free cash and where the, where the excess receipts or appropriations that weren't fully expended came from, and what you're noting is the $3.5 million. The primary driver in interest earnings is from, well, one of the drivers is from the ARPA funds that were, we were obligated, were obligated 12/31/2024, but had been on, a lot of them had been on deposit by 6/30/2024. But throughout the city, the amount of cash we have on deposit and the hard work of the Treasurer's Office to find competitive interest rates in the bank were all part of the success we had in excess receipts. So, conservative estimates.
Yeah, I guess that's my question. How, did we spread that money out with trying to find the best interest rates there? How did you go about that?
Yes, we abide by, we have an investment policy that we abide by to, you know, safety, liquidity, and yield are our primary goals for investments. And there was a motion made by the council a couple of weeks ago to provide details on all of the accounts, which we will, we will be bringing in a week or two to the council. Every account we have on deposit has a different interest rate, but with the MMDT, which is one of the main depositories we use, we've had, we've had good luck with rates. So, that has been part of the success in investment earnings.
What was the FY23 total? Do you remember?
Off the top of my head, I'm going to say $7 million in total investment earnings, but that is a number we will provide in the report.
Okay. I guess the only drawback I really saw in this was we still seem to have the albatross of a parking enterprise, which seems to be every year, every year. And in reading all this material, it did state, I believe from either you or Giovanni, about, you know, we are potentially looking at raising rates again down the line. Unfortunately, it doesn't, it seems inevitable that we're going to have to do that, but that is troublesome to me that we're still putting that type of money from the stabilization fund. So, just something that my colleagues and I have an eye on, that's all. And once again, City Manager, Mayor, excellent job with the frontrunner program. Thank you.
Councillor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo my colleague's comment earlier. That was an excellent presentation, Mr. Manager, and I can see why it's an item above that presentation that the team won the Government Financial Officers' Presentation Award, and I can see that congratulations to you and to the CFO, but basically, you know, you had the dream team of working together, and in that short period of time, was able to highlight all the challenges and all the success that you did in the past few months. I was very, very happy to see that every facet, every corner of the city, from small organization to big organization, live performing arts to municipal buildings, that we see some kind of funding from the ARPA funding, and that was our focus, to make sure that the entire city could make good use of that to bring everybody, to elevate everyone upwards. So, you know, I, I think if the public have access to the website, just look at all the lists of all the funding that the administration did, it is very, very impressive. And I just also want to highlight, since we have the director and the board directors from LM A here, I am in full support of the recommendation to have the building you mentioned, to make it shine, to make LM A shine. We always knew that it's the jewel of the city. I think that is a wonderful project to do. As we know, all the activities, all the shows at the LM A, they are really the engine of the downtown economic, you know, for the entire city as well. In the dead of the winter, there's shows going on, as tonight, almost every day on the weekend, people come to the city to watch the show, to enjoy the show, have good experience in the city, to go support the small businesses. So, I think that is one of the great things that we're able to do with this type of funding. So, I am wholeheartedly will support that. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Councillor Belanger.
I was very, very happy to see that every facet, every corner of the city, from small organization to big organization, live performing arts to municipal buildings, that we see some kind of funding from the ARPA funding. And that was our focus, to make sure that the entire city could make good use of that to bring everybody, to elevate everyone upwards. So, you know, I, I think if the public have access to the website, just look at all the lists of all the funding that the administration did, it is very, very impressive. And I just also want to highlight, since we have the director and the board directors from LMA here, I am in full support of the recommendation to have the building you mentioned, to make it shine, to make LMA shine. We always knew that it's the jewel of the city. I think that is a wonderful project to do. As we know, all the activities, all the shows at the LMA, they are really the engine of the downtown economic, you know, for the entire city as well. In the dead of the winter, there's shows going on, as tonight, almost every day on the weekend, people come to the city to watch the show, to enjoy the show, have good experience in the city, to go support the small businesses. So, I think that is one of the great things that we're able to do with this type of funding. So, I am wholeheartedly will support that. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Counsel Belanger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I share the same sentiments with my colleagues. Threw you to the manager. Mr. Manager, I could see a lot of time was invested in that presentation. I sincerely want to thank you and your administration for putting that together, and I think it's a win, not only a win for this council, but for the taxpayers at home. You and your administration, with your thoughtfulness and your diversity in spending, you have encompassed all the pillars in government, in local government. You have taken care of public safety with fire trucks and police vehicle updates, roadway improvements. You did a number, the highest number on record in 2024 in the city of Lowell. Economic development opportunities have never been so high, with an additional $1.5 million going into that from free cash to create even more opportunities for those neighborhoods who need it the most. Your neighborhood improvements, your parks and open spaces, where every neighborhood literally was a beneficiary across the city of Lowell, including my district, with beautiful Veterans Park. It is greatly appreciated. So, and I could see you, problems that have risen from the past, such as the cybersecurity breach we had, you're investing a tidy sum of money into that prevention as well. Very, very important. So, if I could sum up your, the, your update, your State of the City address, and the city of Lowell in early 2025, upward trajectory, to say the least. In the future, looks very bright. As you stated, with the Link Project, with our great partner, with the UMass Lowell, the development that's going to take, go underway in 2025, as well as the mayor's, as I stated meetings ago, the mayor struck gold for the city of Lowell with the front-runner city program, and we have officially apparently been declared a front-runner city. Outstanding. That is absolutely huge. So, this is a win. Our city is on the verge of being transformed, and that's good news for the viewers at home and the taxpayers at home. This is all going to be new tax revenue, which is going to assist the homeowners immensely. So, great news. I am very excited about the future, Mr. Manager, working with you, and I'd also like to thank the wisdom of my colleagues as well, because it's teamwork, and everyone needs to be rowing in the same direction if you want results like you just posted. So, thank you very much. Congratulations to everyone involved. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say a quick thank you to Manager Golden, your team, and really every employee of the city of Lowell. The presentation you just put forward is a team effort that encompasses everyone in City Hall and every other city building across the city. It's a lot of hard work, and, you know, we're seeing the results of that work. We're seeing improvements everywhere, whether it's streets, sidewalks, buildings, schools, fire trucks, everywhere you look, there's improvements, and that we're building on the successes of the past. And to sit here at kind of a precipice of two extremely exciting projects in the Link Project and the Front Runner Cities Project, there's, there should be nothing but optimism about the city of Lowell. And that optimism is well-founded and is directly attributable to the actions of the staff of the city, the mayor, and I just can't thank you guys enough. Everyone's hard work is really paying off, and I can't wait to see what's next. You know, you're kind of spoiling us with this big stuff, but I hope you keep spoiling us. So, thank you for all your efforts. I look forward to getting back to work and seeing what we can do in the rest of this year. Thank you.
Counsel Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to just thank the manager for all of his hard work and the staff. That was an incredible presentation. It's great to see all the work that's been done. Sometimes you forget it, you know, in the course of all the work that you're doing. I'd also just like to commend you for building the reserve levels up, what that does for us long-term for our bond ratings. It's just money that you're saving the city in the future as well. And as everyone has said, the parks, the fire stations, the roads, the schools, I mean, just so many things have just been great happening in the city. And then hearing from the auditorium members saying how there's repairs that they've just haven't seen done in, you know, years, and that you're getting them done, the school repairs that are getting done, and now all this excitement with the front-runner city. I mean, thank you to the mayor for taking the initiative to bring this forward to us. It's really appreciated, and for the city manager for moving forward with it. It's an exciting time to be in Lowell. So, thank you all.
Counsel Getchey.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Again, as I'll echo what everyone is saying about the presentation, amazing. I wish they had a voiceover, though. That was better.
Okay, was it me?
We did, we did have extra opera money maybe we could have used, but I don't know.
CFO wouldn't approve that expenditure.
We'd be a lot faster if I did it. Right, yeah. Thirty seconds.
Someone had to say it. You know that. But thank you again for the report. I just, Mr. Baldwin, on the revenue side, you know, as you look at, you have 7.7, about $7.8 million in excess money in the revenue side, but when you look at it, majority of it is excise tax in investments. And I know at one point you had spoken about investments and the large returns because of some of the great decisions during the finance piece when you looked at interest rates and everything. Do you expect that to continue, those big numbers like that, or are we going to go back to, back down on our revenue projections for, is this year, I guess, still following the same patterns of the investment piece being that much over what our revenue projections are?
Mr. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I just want to correct what I said before. The total for investment earnings in FY24 is $9 million. And no, I don't expect to see that for a long time, and I do remember Counsel Janess asked this question during a finance subcommittee, I believe it was last year or maybe even the prior, if we can expect that to continue, and I don't. I don't expect the rates to stay the same or the level of cash in the bank to stay the same. However, our cash position has historically been strong, and that is, you know, in part because we fund capital projects, it's because of the monthly distributions of state aid from the state. And so, our, you know, I expect it to return to level after the end of 2026, when ARPA is ended, but, you know, we will continue to conservatively budget our revenues, and as we lose access to federal funding, which has been, it has been an opportunity for the city to not have to rely on general fund appropriations to fund some of the things, some of the services that residents expect. It will get difficult at that time, and there's no, there's no sugarcoating that. I think it's something, a reality we all have to brace ourselves for, but this council, you know, I think is willing and has demonstrated the willingness to tackle the tough challenges. So, I have no doubt that we'll be able to meet those, those challenges, Counselor.
And I wanted to highlight that because next year, when we see these numbers roll in and we see that maybe we will get revenue somewhere else, but like motor vehicle excise taxes, another big one that we took in, between the two, it's almost a total, which is a lot, and I don't know if the people purchase vehicles or do the same thing the same way, but I just don't want people to walk out of here and say, wow, look at the revenue sources, because majority of it, as you outlined, were great investments and stuff by your team, which is phenomenal, and it had a lot to do with the opera money offsets and stuff like that, which is a big piece to how we've just moved money from one area and got it to another area that would be beneficial, beneficial in the long run. And it's the same thing, the other thing that really, really concerns me is the enterprise funds. A lot of that has been offset with opera money. And when you look, even with the opera money, they're all running in the deficit area, more or less. That's concerning, and I think there's some deficiencies that really, truly need to be looked at. And I know that we just went through a great presentation, and this is like raining on the parade, but I just want people to understand that when you start looking at these numbers, there's going to be tough decisions made very shortly. And I think that when we look at our enterprise funds, there's three places that we're going to have to make some tough, tough decisions, and whether people are happy with us or not, it's reality that people can't keep affording the increases to them. So, because we offset a lot in the opera funding piece, and the same thing on the revenue side when we looked at the revenue projections, a lot of it was based, besides the investments, on a lot of the opera funding that transferred over into places that we actually should have had money spent. We look at the fire trucks. I mean, think about how neglected that was. So, that, that's what goes back to what the manager said. I hope that we're really diving into real capital plans and really diving into these things, because you look, fire, wastewater, water, police, all saw vehicle or, and then when you look at the schools, you look at the maintenance piece that we took large portions of money and threw it at to try to solve some of the historical problems that, because of lack of capital planning. So, that, that's really what I think that the challenge is to this administration going forward, and to all of us, is how do we dive in and actually spend the money on capital planning and start moving it that way? Mr. Manager, I do thank you more than you will ever know about the maintenance piece at the high school, because I do think the return is going to be greater than the expense on that piece. And when you have employees over there who now have an opportunity to be happy and see things get done immediately in real time, I think you're going to have more productive employees for the students, and I think that's the payback. That doesn't have a monetary number, but it makes people happy when you say, okay, this outlet isn't working, can we get to it and stuff like that? And hopefully, we're not paying $800 for urinal pieces any longer. But again, I thank you for your hard work. I think it's an unbelievable presentation. It highlights everything that we talked about from three years ago when I came in here and I said to you, we got to get this road preservation piece done. You got, we got to get moving, and you lived by your word. And I'm hoping that going forward, we see the amount of asphalt used for potholes go extremely down so that that saves more time for our DPW to do other things and saves money for our residents and damage to their vehicles. So, again, I thank you, your staff, Mr. Mayor, unbelievable job with the Toronto piece and everything that you're doing to promote and push this city forward. I think that as a council, there's a lot to like about Lowell again. So, thank you again.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Managers, excellent work. You and your team, really, this is a teamwork. I know you always talk about teamwork, and so you bring all your department head together and working on improving from, you know, roadwork to, you know, new fleet for the fire department, as well as neighborhood and park improvement and so on and so forth, you know, and I can't wait. I can't wait to see the Link Projects, you know, get rolling, you know, and I can't wait to see a front-runner city. When those two combined, the next couple of years is going to make Lowell a much, much better places to live and work and raise families. And so, I do share with the enterprise fund, I mean, you know, we run into from parking to sewer and so on. We need to address that at some point. You know, it would take a while, particularly the enterprise for parking, you know, because we still have to pay the park, the parking garages down at Hampton Canal. Anyway, tonight is about the work you and your team have done, an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Noon. I'd just say a couple of words from up here. Mr. Manager, the best thing you have done in your time here is hire the team around you. They continuously make yourself look good, but also the council as well. Every time we have issues and a phone call is made, generally, it's taking care of the same day, if not sooner. And then going forward with just a quick review of this past weekend in Toronto, exciting to hear the words from, from the council, their excitement. They are just as excited about coming here as we are for them to get here. They, it's beyond wild what the proposals are, what they want to do when they come here. They have promised to be here sometime in April to meet with the council, to do some visits to different sites throughout the city. Counsel Mercier, Mayor West from Richmond Hill was sorry he missed you, so he's looking forward to seeing you again very soon. But, you know, I just want to thank the council as well. I mean, it's not one person. Every vote we've taken on this initiative has been unanimous, and sometimes, you know, you have to look forward and dealing with the here and now of everything, and a lot of the times, this council has been very selfless in their votes, not realizing that, you know, you're not taking care of a pothole or a streetlight, but you're looking forward 10, 20, 30 years, as Counsel Noon said. So, just want to thank everybody for everything that they have done going forward. Mr. Manager, good job this evening. And with that being said, I would take 7.3 right now, that was a motion made by Counsel Belanger, seconded by Counsel Mercier, ordered by the City Council of the City of Lowell by two-thirds voters follows, that the amount $21,019,846 be appropriated. Motion to approve by Counsel Getchey, seconded by Counsel Mercier. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Counsel Mercier.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Belanger.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Decodo.
Yes.
Counsel Getchey.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Eleven years.
Last round of applause tonight, Mr. Manager, you're done. All right, Section 6, you can just see, Manager 6.1, motion response A, opera update, Counselors Robinson and Janess. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Again, it kind of, as you touched on with the last presentation, I'm glad to see ARPA. One thing I can say from the time I took this seat to now, different administrations, different train of thought, I've been pushing right along with my colleagues, equal dispersment, one of the key components to open space and recreation. As it was outlined in ARPA, we saw that's kind of people's mental well-being and health to get out there, and I am ecstatic to see, not only did you commit to equal dispersment for all eight areas of the city, you executed. You and your team got the contracts together, and the amount of time that you did, the amount of programs you did in this short amount of time with this ARPA money, and however many contracts that went along with it, as you mentioned, it's unbelievable. And I know the residents are really, really going to be happy to see these improvements. Amory Park, Splash Pad, Splash Pad coming, first time ever in Centerville. These smaller investments that some people look at as nonsense, what they do is build back that sense of community. They give the neighborhood something to look forward to. Those hot summer months, you can bring your family down a five-minute walk in Centerville and enjoy what ARPA did and the city of Lowell did, amongst many other things. So, I applaud you, and I think to see the investment you made in many other areas that my colleagues brought to the table is going to pay dividends long-term. So, thank you very much for a thorough report on the ARPA, and I'm glad to see we used every penny by the time necessary. Thank you.
Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to echo Counsel Robinson's thoughts here. Having this full report really breaks it down and gives a lot of great information, and I hope that the folks who are watching at home take the time to bring this up and read through it, because the amount of information in here is, is too much for us to go into tonight. But I do thank you for all the work, and the highlight for me is that we are spending every dollar. We are not returning any money to the federal government for not having spent it. And we're doing it in ways that are going to pay dividends and be visible in the city for a long time to come, whether that's building a new park on Jackson Street, or the improvements to some of the municipal buildings, or funding an affordable housing trust fund. The, the things that are being done with this money are going to improve and have improved life in the city of Lowell for, for all of our residents, and will continue to do so both through the implementation phase, but even beyond that. So, I thank you for your hard work on this. I look forward to seeing these projects wrap up and all the ribbon cuttings and all the fun parts we get to do when the projects are done. But thank you.
Counsel Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Managers, and particularly your team, Mr. Flynn and his team, for putting this report together, very detailed report, and this is over 100 program and project for this, and one of the big ones for us would be the new fleet for the fire department, you know, and it's just unprecedented, and they're happy there, they're, you know, first responder, we need them to have every equipment they needed to make sure that our families are safe. So, I'm happy with this, and I know that, you know, all the money has been allocated, which is a good thing. So, thanks, thanks again, and thanks, Mr. Flynn, for me. Thank you.
Belanger. Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to echo my colleagues' sentiments, and I have the same feeling, particularly the small investment in open space and park, like in the Highlands, you know, the Clemente Park in the acre, this North Common, their family really enjoyed it in the summertime with their children. I also want to thank the team for ARPA. I also want to thank the team, the ARPA team, who are here today. Thank you for your excellent work and your report and submission to the federal government on time. I just have a quick question for Mr. Manager or Mr. CFO. You know, will the federal government freeze on the federal funding affect, you know, affect the ARPA funding that was committed by the federal government to us? Will that be affected? OMB will yank the money that not being spent yet?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Through to the council. Counselor, we never know what tomorrow will bring, but this team has expeditiously put this money appropriately where it needs to go. I wish I could tell you what's going to happen with monies tomorrow, but I can tell you with the burn rate we have, and Mr. Flynn and his team has really done a great job in ensuring that all of this is spoken for. Mr. Flynn, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, excuse me. So specifically to your question, if it... Is this on?
Yeah.
There we go, okay. So to your specific question, I believe, was will this funding freeze affect us?
Yes.
And the answer is it should not because we actually already have the funds in the bank. Majority of the interest that was spoken about earlier came from those. So as long as we spend the remaining funds we have, there won't be any money going back to the federal government related to the program.
Thank you. I was afraid that money might be yanked by the OMB.
As we all are.
Constable Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Thank you again, Mr. Flynn. I think this is an unbelievable job you've done all along with moving the pieces. I think when you look at everything in general that we put together, to me, the ARPA funds for us in the city of Lowell were more about a maintenance plan, things that were neglected for so long. We looked at affordable housing, you put $3.3 million in. When you look at the fire trucks that you and I talked about after the Wall Street fire and we talked about, you know, keeping companies all open so that we've saved lives, whether people believe it or not, between all of the stuff that the fire department do every day, I think that keeping those companies open have saved people's lives, whether it's been people who have been addicted and getting help when they need it at that point. And then when you start looking at some of the investments from the water and wastewater, the vehicles bought, the Vector trucks, $1.7 million, when you look at that number, it's a big number. We just talked about enterprise fund and how we're running close to deficits. You talk about the video truck at wastewater. We talk about the infrastructure over at the Douglas Road when it was all flowing into people's houses, sewage and everything. So, I mean, those numbers, a big $3.5 million that it saved for the taxpayer. And you have a Congresswoman online on social media saying what a great job they did at securing those funds that you spent on fire trucks. So when you look at some of the schools, the heating issues between the roofs and everything else that we dove into and we said, okay, here we are. But these are all a great platform for what we need to do better in the future for maintenance, whether it's our parks, whether it's everything else. And I think that, I thank you, Mr. Flynn, because I remember the beginning of this when we all started and we were all scratching our heads, oh, where are we going? At the end of the day, the ultimate decision is the city manager on ARPA funding. It was not the city council. So the kudos go to you and your staff because you just took some direction, but you pushed back and made the right decisions that in a lot of cases that helped people do better. You helped little nonprofits get going and help in the community. As small as it sounds, out of all that money, $30,000 means a lot to a lot of people when they're going. When you look at the Elliott Church, we're talking about a fence over there and talking about other things that we've given them $30,000 and then a $33,000 upgrade over there. And we look at those monies, it was to help people get help. And whether they took it or not, we still invested in all of those decisions. And, you know, the thanks from our community, and it's starting to show by the South Common. People are down there sledding again and the police that we were able to supply with new vehicles and more modern technology. So that ARPA report's amazing to me. And I hope going forward, we slowly make investments into capital plans on fire trucks so we never have to take this dive into it like that again, or the wastewater vehicles by placing money into, you know, the enterprise free cash piece so that they have those funds going forward, whether it's $50,000 a year for the 10 years or whatever it is. So thank you again for your hard work. Mr. Flynn, thank you for everything you've done for us. I think it's an amazing piece and it takes a lot of work and a lot of drive to keep changing the numbers as this council changes every patent along the way. So thank you again.
Motion Response B, Wester Street and Stemmer Street.
Mr. Mayor, can we take motion E out of order?
Got it. Motion Response E, LPD, Official Policy Immigration and Customs, Constable Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Chief Hudon for the policies. It's clear, though, it's clear that, you know, it's, the policy's clear. The policy is focused on enforcing local and state law and not act on, as I say, federal immigration agencies. I had opportunity to have Chief Hudon on UML radio show last Sunday, this past Sunday, talking about it and talking about how we should engage and communicate that policy to community leader and advocate group as well as resident and to continue to maintain that open dialogue on these issues. So he's willing and ready to do that, and he's going to put that on social media, so which is a good thing. Good thing is help ease some of the comfort and some of the worry of some of the residents. So I thank you. Thank you for the policy.
Back to motion Response B, Wester Street and Stemmer Street, Constable Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I and my colleague, Councilor John Dakota and Councilor Eric Getche, and all the council here are happy and looking forward to the completion of this project sometime in October of this year. Thank you.
Motion Response C, Wester Street, no parking, Constable Getche.
Thank you again. I think this is perfect. I didn't know that it was under the city control, but as we all learned, I think everyone was the same way. For the speed limit, we had to go to the state, but for the other piece, we didn't. But please thank Ms. Altman for the great work and hopefully, it's done quick. Thank you.
Motion Response D, cameras, Constable Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you for the response. My only, it doesn't really tie the two together. The initial request was, I understand, that the dumping on the green old grounds, some of it is linked to the clothing and shoe donation bins, but it's still, it's a dark area, kind of off the beaten path when school's out at night. And so I just hope that with, out of the 26 new cameras that have been installed, I hope we're keeping an eye on those kind of dark areas throughout the city. And if any of that is occurring, I hope that they're getting picked up and we're tracking down who's doing that. Thank you.
Motion Response F, flagpole solar lighting at JFK Plaza, Constable Getche.
Thank you again. I think it's amazing. I wish Council Yem would have brought this up, but I figured I would try to follow along.
He beat me to it.
As long as it's not a fire truck, we're all right. Thank you.
Motion Response G, Prescott Street sidewalk tripping hazards, Constable Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the response and the fact that we're, you know, doing this work and looking to put this project in place, the new product that was mentioned in the report. Sounds interesting. I hope that works out well. And I would just ask that we keep in mind areas like this that are close to senior housing. I feel like a lot of our, you know, as people get older, they don't move as well, they're more likely to trip. So there is quite a bit of senior housing downtown and in close proximity to Prescott Street, which is why I brought this up. So, you know, as we look to roll out that project and improve the sidewalks across the city, I feel like things that are close to a high density of senior residents might want to be bumped up on the list a little bit, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Motion Response H, Bartlett School chairlift, Constable Valanga.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, through you. I see DPW Commissioner Paul St. Seir is here. If you could come up to the podium, please. Thank you for coming tonight, Commissioner. I say we have some good news. I see we found some money in the city's capital ADA funding for some new chairlifts at the Bartlett. If you could kindly update the council, please.
So at this point in the game, we've been dealing with the school department, with some of what their needs are there. The Bartlett School has a lot of kids that are medically fragile or have some special needs as far as being able to maneuver and get around the building. The unfortunate part at the moment is that we've had some failure with these, kind of all in the same year. So it was not on the radar that these were going to be replaced this year. They have had several service calls to them, and we've dubbed the fact that it's indeed the time to replace them. We have the unit that's in the classroom that was their number one concern is back up and running at this point, but we're looking to move forward in these next months with replacement of all three wheelchair.
Okay, thank you. So you used the word replace. So this is a new, this is not a repair, this is a replacement of three chairlifts, Commissioner?
Yeah, it'll be full replacement.
Full replacement?
They're more than 30 years old.
Excellent. Wow, to the tune of $250,000. That's a tidy sum of money that was able to be sought for this. So your work is greatly appreciated, Commissioner. I know the Disability Commission will be happy, as well as the faculty and the students at the, more importantly, the students at the Bartlett. So please do your best that this gets done in a timely fashion.
Will do.
Thank you so much for the update. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Councilors, I want to remind everybody that it was just a few years back with our ADA funding for our capital piece, we increased it from, this council increased it from 5% to 7%. And that additional 2% is giving the Commissioner additional monies and additional availability. So you're thanking us, but we're, quite frankly, you know, this council made that happen by increasing that for the first time in history, going from 5% to 7%. And that really, that 2% is really making a difference where we can access funds. I just want to make sure everybody remembers that. I know that the Commissioner was very excited when that happened originally.
Yes, thank you for that update, Mr. Manager. That 2% probably makes a difference in this one. This is a hefty sum of money. So I'm very excited. I'm very happy, especially for the kids at the Bartlett. So thank you.
Constable Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to the Commissioner. So you have 70 elevators and chairlifts in the city. Do we know the age of all of them?
We're actually gathering that information. Most of it we do have in place. Certainly, all of them are, barring the high school and the library next door, are considerable aged, you know, greater than 30 years.
So you're going to assume my next question is, is there a capital plan in place to replace these over the next few years? Because as one goes, they're going. So I'm just, are you putting that together now or is it something that has been in place, a capital plan for them?
It has not been in place. It's something that we're putting together. We're looking at, you know, it's a little over $20 million when it's all said and done if you look at the number of units that we have across three different groups.
Numbers mean nothing to me until I see them in a capital plan and they start running through because 70, 20 million, I don't know, you know, anything about that. But I think at the end of the day, again, here's another deficiency that is brought out by a city councillor again. It comes down to, okay, the Bartlett School keeps calling and I receive the same calls as Constable Valanga, that nothing was getting done on the things. And I'm not saying either way, I don't know the answer to the question, but they say it was down for a long time, we can't get contractors here. If a contractor doesn't respond to you guys, what happens if they're under contract?
Well, I wouldn't say that that's the case if the contractors weren't showing up. I'm not sure where that information came from. I think that the equipment was to the point that it was fairly fragile that it's continuing to break down. So that was really the issue.
How long was it broken down? Because we're hearing, Constable Valanga, two, three months, right? You got the same phone call, right? Yeah, we're hearing two to three months it was broken down. And it may be pots, I don't know the answer. But communication is a huge piece to our flaw, is when you walk into someone and you say, hey, look, you know what? It's down. They're saying this amount of time, here we are. But that's not what's being communicated to us. It's, we called them, they showed up, they never came back. That's what the school department feels. So that's where I think a lot of our breakdown is in the system, is that, look, we don't have capital plans. We find out from Constable Valanga that there's more of an issue. We sit here, and then you highlight that there's 70 elevators that we don't have capital plans for, and we're sitting here going, okay, here's another expense that's going to hit the table. But what is that expense? How do we get to that point? And, Mr. Manager, you understand exactly what I'm saying to you is, I think at this point, as we've been saying it a long time, as a facilities department, it's huge because these are the things that people have in 160, 170-page documents saying, okay, this is that, that's this. I question, are they all inspected and up to date?
Yes.
Every year?
Yes.
Okay. Then, I mean, again, if they're inspected every year and they're up to date, somebody should be writing on these inspection reports that they're failing and they need to go. But I don't get to see those inspection reports, so I'm just wondering, okay, is this company really what we need at this time? So again, I look forward to seeing the capital plan for these things and saying, okay, is it, we're going to replace two a year or three a year for 30 years? Or how are we going to get to this point? So, because the ARPA money's gone. Thank you.
Is there somebody else? Constable, all right, Constable Rourke, Valanga, go ahead.
Thank you. One more quick point. I appreciate Constable Getche's additional points, very important. But, Mr. Mayor, through you to the Commissioner again now. Commissioner, the Bartlett School has been selected for some odd reason that I'm having difficulty coming to terms with. This has been selected or was selected to be the center facility for students with mobility issues, correct? The Bartlett School?
Well, there are several, I don't mean to speak in front of the councillor, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
There are several medically fragile children who are there. In some cases, they might need the assistance of a wheelchair, and some others have other issues there. That was several years ago, and that was a choice made by the school department.
Okay, when you say several, that's a higher than average compared to other schools. Am I right?
Yeah, there are multiple.
Can I say that with confidence?
Yeah, there are multiple school nurses there and many children.
Well, yes.
I mean, Constable Dakota, from his experience with transportation side, knows what we had to face.
Okay, that doesn't make, I'm not saying you, Commissioner, I don't know who made that decision, but I don't understand it. I will say that. You know, if, to put it in layman's terms, if I'm in the market to buy a new home and I have, I or myself or a family member has limited mobility issues, I'm going to look for a ranch, right? So that being said, why this facility was selected, they have the high number of, you know, limited students baffles me, to say the least. Is that being looked at, are other locations being looked at at the present time? May I ask?
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't know what the plan actually is, but I know it's a huge concern of the superintendent, and he's addressed that, and they're looking to, you know, see what other options they have there for.
Okay, well, thank you for that. That's a conversation I'll have. I'll call the superintendent directly and see where we're at with this and see how we came to this decision, okay? Thank you very much, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Constable Dakota.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The primary reason, Counselor, was that the Bartlett School is a K to 8 school. So it's had, it's called a LEAP program, and most of the students will go right through from K to 8 rather than changing them. And where the other programs where they have a CSA, quote unquote, artistic schools, they're designated for that. But this particular program, the LEAP program, is at the Bartlett School right now. I know there's been talk that once the whole high school project is finished, that there could be movement due to the Lowell Freshman Academy going to be vacant. So I think you'll see some changes, but I don't think that that'll happen until the high school project is finished. But right now, because it is a K to 8 school, it gives us, it gives a little bit more flexibility.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification, Counselor. Thank you, Mayor.
Constable Getche.
Just one more question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Commissioner. I drew a blank. Of the 70 elevators in place now, are there others that are out of service right now?
To my knowledge, at this moment, no.
So there's none broke anywhere? So if somebody's calling us saying this has been down for this long, you're saying you're not aware of it?
Correct. So where?
Okay.
It sounds like you.
Yeah. So someone's saying there is. So someone's saying there is, and that's the question, is have people been made aware that there are? Because I'm sure tomorrow I'll know exactly which one, because it's gonna come through, and they're saying that they haven't been checked all the way through. So that's what the question is, is are we actually going through all the equipment and making sure it's all running? And are we aware, and is, I don't know if they're going through School Dude or how they're getting to you guys, but if there are some that are known that are down, and we don't know it, that's another issue that's on the plate, so I will ask tomorrow morning to get that. Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Counselor, you just brought it up, the fact of School Dude, some are great at, you know, some schools are great at using it, some not so much. Some will send an email, and that email, as we all know, we have those emails, but we're really trying to push everybody to use School Dude, so we can, you know, presumably the Commissioner would be able to fire that right up and say elevator, elevator section. So, once again, anybody that is talking about this stuff, please make sure that, from a school's, excuse me, from a school's perspective, I want to make sure the head custodian puts that in, so we know that answer would be simple to research, so.
Every School Dude request is supposed to go through the principal, and the principals know it, so if something comes through, that's other principal, nobody else.
It could be an email, because we still have people that are used to sending emails, emails, and that unfortunately is not working appropriately.
Motion for response, I. Tree trimming, Andover Street, Council of Belanger.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, thank you for the response on that. It is some good news that this is a process that's going to go out to bid and to cover all neighborhoods in the city, including Andover Street, so I look forward to your feedback in the coming weeks, months on this, to see how soon we get going. Thank you.
Motion for response, J. Let us support Boys and Girls Club, Counselors Getchea and Robinson.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you, you know, Mr. Hungler's been before us, we've contributed. Again, I think this is perfect. Anything we can do to try to nudge them along towards the finish line and reach out to some of our allies in the state, hopefully it doesn't fall on deaf ears, and I'm looking forward to try to continue advocating for any additional resources to help the Boys and Girls Club get to that finish line. Thank you.
All set, great. Six point two, official reports, return to that. Riverwalk stakeholders, Mr. Fashado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've had a meeting, our first meeting with all the stakeholders, NPS, UML, and we're gonna be meeting quarterly moving forward to go into maintenance of the Riverwalk, which would be, and we also set up Civic Plus for complaints. Some resident can enter a complaint on overgrowth, graffiti, any issues. One thing we didn't talk about was snow removal, and Council of Janesia motion tonight, we'll probably put that on the next agenda for our meeting in March. But it was a productive meeting, everybody was pretty happy, and moving forward, I think it'll be a good thing for the Riverwalk and the residents.
Counselor S.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the report and the work you guys are putting in here. As we talked about earlier, the Riverwalk is an important piece of the city. It's something that gets a lot of use, it's something that attracts a lot of attention, and people enjoy it, and we should make it as best as we can, and I appreciate that we have all these partners that are willing to chip in and sit down and talk with us and figure out how to make it better. As I was reading the report and thinking about the timing, I was thinking there might be an opportunity here, you know, with Earth Day coming in April, I wonder if there might be an opportunity to put some big event together where all of our partners are working on the Riverwalk the same day around Earth Day. Might give us something that we can, we can market, we can, you know, make a thing. And this year it's the Riverwalk, maybe next year it's a park, maybe, you know, whatever. It might be an opportunity to build something annually that people can look forward to, participate in, and help improve the city. Just a thought, thank you.
Official report, Waste Water Capital Plan Update, Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Mr. Fox, would you like to take control of that? Counselors, I also want to give a big thank you and a congratulations to Mr. Fox for the prestigious award that he received. It's really a big step, and throughout the United States, I think he was one of, Mr. Fox, one of three, is that, one of four? One of four that have received the Waste Water Award out in California. This is really a big, big deal.
Personally, I think you should bring the award every time you come up to that podium.
Mr. Manager, did you forget the suit coat in California?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I'm honored. It's not just for, like, it's, it's not just an award for me, right? It's an award for the community, for this council, for the manager, all the hard work that goes into Waste Water and goes into that treatment plant, into all the challenges we face, whether it's the increasing price of sludge, all the consent agreements we have to meet, all the community stormwater regulations that are coming down, all the new regulations, right? And so it's all of us together that I think really get this award, and I really want to thank the team at Waste Water. If it wasn't for their work, like, that award wouldn't be possible, and the work we do at Waste Water wouldn't be possible. There's a lot of great people that work there, and they do a nice job. So, yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Senator Report.
Yep, so the Clean Water State Revolving Fund, so this is a federal agency financing program that provides subsidized loans to improve and protect water quality and health from the Commonwealth. And so as part of our treatment plant upgrade, and this is a twenty-seven-point-eight-million-dollar project, where we're focusing on efficiency, we're focusing on meeting regulatory compliance, including a new phosphorus limit for discharge into the treatment facility, and the rehabilitation of critical infrastructure. And so I'm happy to report that as part of that Clean Water Trust, we have gotten a loan forgiveness of fourteen-point-nine percent, so this is gonna equal four-point-one-five million dollars. That's being forgiven from that loan, and they have an interest rate of one-point-five percent. You know, I couldn't tell more, but the, this is much lower than the municipal bond rate of four or five percent. And so we're doing a couple of really big projects there. We're changing out our centrifuges. Right now, the facility runs with one centrifuge. It's a rental unit, cost is about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a month to rent this unit. We're getting three new centrifuges. It's gonna optimize our process time, it's gonna reduce the amount of time we process, it's gonna control process upsets. We're also redoing a lot of critical infrastructure down at the treatment facility, so a lot of old outdated infrastructure is getting replaced. That's another major process. We're adding more chemical delivery systems, so this is, this is a big critical upgrade for us down at the treatment. Yep, we're looking forward to it.
Awesome. Any questions? Council of Belanger.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you to Mr. Fox. Congratulations once again, you continue to impress, and the City of Low is very lucky to have you. And congratulations, and thank you again. But that being said, on the report, while I didn't see any expenditure item, line item for this, but is any of this going to address odor that's emanating from, you know, my, many of my constituents, River Road, East Merrimack Street are affected, and especially in the summer months, by the odor emanating from the plant? Is this address, minimize any of that, or is there any future plans, if you don't mind?
So odor is a top priority at the facility. That's one of the things we strive for and work to reduce odors as much as possible. And so while this plan doesn't have like a upgrade that addresses odor by itself per se, like a lot of the things we're doing will see big benefits to odor, to odor generation. Every time we have a shutdown, every time we bring a tank down, every time we have a process upset, it creates odor. When we can't run the centrifuge, it creates odor. So having this new equipment, being able to rehabilitate the equipment we have and replace it with new, more efficient, more modern equipment will help us reduce those upsets. We run twenty-four-seven, and it'll help reduce that odor component facility, especially the sludge production upgrades.
Right.
And so part of that too, one of the things we're looking at is like, what can we do for future odor upgrades? And so we have a consultant working at the treatment facility, and they have the task of coming up with a, like a conceptual report of ideas for future projects.
Excellent, excellent. How soon can we expect that, Aaron, may I ask?
I would probably say in the next few months.
Okay, okay, thank you. You know, again, so these, sort of indirectly, these improvements are going to help in the sense of making equipment more efficient, it sounds like, slightly, so that'll be good. And anything this consultant brings forward, anything, please, report back to the councils. I think, you know, I think Counselor Robinson is going, here's for many, his constituents too, on the north side of the river, if you will, and it's, you know, it's an issue for residents in the city, so please think of that determine as we go forward. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Senator Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Ruck, through you to Mr. Fox. Do we have any other projects in the line for the Clean Water Trust in the future?
Yeah, so we, Centerville Sewer Separation Project, that's in line for the Clean Water Trust. The first phase of that is on that IUP list, what they call the IUP list. We also have other projects, our Phase Three, which is gonna be a separate sewer separation project, where folks, and now we're working with the agencies in negotiation right down the Lower Highlands, and those are gonna be like the major ones. But yeah, so we're running all the projects, especially these consent decree projects we come through, through the SRF. We're applying for it. It takes a lot of work from the financial team, from the Waste Water team, to apply for this SRF, but yeah, like, we're seeking and we're aggressively trying to go.
What is the percentage of acceptance for projects that you put into them? Is it been a high rate for us, or has it been a challenge to get awarded these type of funds?
For the most part, Lowell has been pretty much awarded, with the consent decree in place, with the fact that what they call an environmental justice community tier three, I believe, we rank high on their list of awarding projects.
So we get a high number of, we get a high number of awards based off of that? I think it's amazing that you're getting a loan forgiveness of fourteen-point-nine percent, and then also it cuts down to one-point-five percent on the other, on the backside, so this is amazing. Great job by the team again. Thank you.
Senator Robinson.
Thank you. I'd just like to say congratulations, Aaron. I can speak from personal experience, anytime there's been anything related in Centerville, you've been right there, above and beyond for our residents, greatly appreciated. I can see why you got that award, your professionalism is topped here. I think we're in good hands with you behind some of the undertakings we have in the pipeline, like the CSO project that's gonna be spanned over maybe ten years, who knows how many phases with so many moving pieces. We really appreciate you keeping us informed. I know this is a silly question, kinda, but through you to the manager, maybe? I mean, something I think that gets overlooked quite often, we're celebrating a twenty-seven-point-eight million dollar project to update and improve efficiencies in treatment. Are we doing anything, though, to make sure that our employees are getting a better quality of life at their plant as well? Because I know some of the facilities over there, they could use a little bit of fine tuning, and I mean, they're nowhere near as some of our other facilities as bad, but I think that kinda gets overlooked a lot of times, you know, because everyone's so focused on these big, large-scale efficiencies, but, I mean, whether it's even just updated break room or something that's gonna make their quality of life better, I think that's something to consider.
Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counselor, obviously, a lot of equipment has been changed out, and Mr. Fox is doing a great job with keeping morale up. Quite frankly, the last time, I think we were all there, they brought out a truck that was broken down, and as it, it was all staged, but we do have some new vehicles, et cetera, but we can look at employee happiness, you know, the employee well-being over in that area. The Commissioner's here, and I know that we've been concentrating now on the internals of how to make some of the space where some of our employees, you know, spend some time for lunch, like you're saying. How can we make it a little bit easier? I know we're looking at DPW parks, we're doing some work at parks right now, but I'll talk to Mr. Fox later on to see, you know, if that's something we can do over there, and it's necessary, I'm sure.
Yeah, great suggestion.
Greatly appreciated, thank you.
Mr. Fox, thank you very much. Nice job. Official report, GFOA Budget Award FY 2025. Mr. Manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. This is obviously very exciting, and I want to say thank you very much to Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Ball for all the hard work they've been doing. The institution of the Clairegov has been something that we're still working through to make it a lot easier for our residents to understand where the money is spent, day in and day out, and putting all of the financials online is really something that is pushing this. But quite frankly, it is the leadership of the gentleman to my right, your left, has really made this happen. The fact that we, once again, receive this is no short order, and it's really in relation to the expertise that Mr. Baldwin has, and Mr. Ball is falling right into that same. So I want to say, I say thank you very much on behalf of the administration, on behalf of all of the residents. We are lucky to have two gentlemen, and they'll always deflect, and our auditor does a fabulous job, our treasurer, but our entire financial team, I think, has really gone above and beyond, and especially with what we talked about earlier today, with our increased bond rating. This is all, you know, not by, not by mistake, this is something because we have true professionalism working within our finance department. So I want to say thank you very much to Mr. Baldwin and his entire team. Thank you.
Official report, FY 26, Budget Instructions, Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. We have a budget hearing that unfortunately, due to snow, was canceled, so it's gonna go this Thursday, if it doesn't snow again, but we will be having another one in the future. But in speaking with all of the department heads, the instructions are crystal clear. We had this discussion during our last leadership hearing, leadership meeting, excuse me. Everybody knows exactly what's going on. Mr. Ball has been actively talking to some of these folks, making sure that they know what needs to happen. It's to be extremely concise and conservative with the projections within our financing for the future. And once again, this has everything to do with the fact that the revenue split on our taxes essentially is forty percent from our local tax base and sixty percent coming in from state and federal monies. So what is happening and what is before us, with some of the challenges that could be coming out of Washington DC, as I stated earlier, from Capitol Hill to Beacon Hill, our department heads have the marching orders, if you would, and I think that, once again, Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Ball made it crystal clear. Everybody seems to be understanding this very, very well, and the budget instructions, I'm very happy to hear if anybody has any questions on it, but thus far, with all our department heads, they know where we need to be with us.
Senator Getchea.
Thank you, and, Mr. Manager, I applaud you for this piece, but the challenge comes down to level funding things, when you look at like paper products, and when I look at my budget, I'm like, level funded, I'd be in very big trouble, because everything has gone up, so I gotta cut something else, and you're robbing Peter to pay Paul a lot, you're probably calling upstairs to Mr. Baldwin after the line item runs out and saying, hey, can we, is there a way we can? So I just always challenge that thought. If someone comes through and says, look, you know what, here's what it costs for my paper products, or here's what it costs for this or that, and they have a hard outline, it's hard when you're asking managers to say, hey, stay level funded. It should be, stay level funded, but if something is a challenge, please put it in writing, put it down. And I think that that's the challenge to, when you say that out loud and you come in to justify, so it's hard for them to justify to upper management when they're trying to keep something going in a good way. So it's gonna be a real challenge with electricity, it's gonna be a real challenge when you're looking at the gas costs. Right now, they're down, but, you know, do we have a contract that holds line on, you know, our fuel costs? So some of those things are challenges to the department heads, and I just hate to see that somebody pushes them down to a place where they don't feel that they can be as productive as they should be.
All right, last official report of the evening, FY 24, Fiscal Year Review with Attachments, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Baldwin, if you'd like to go through the fiscal year review.
Baldwin.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and I'll be very brief. The report in the packet related to FY 2024 is a retrospective look, we're talking about a couple of different time periods in tonight's agenda. We would encourage the council, if it were the will of the body, to refer this to a finance subcommittee for a presentation and further discussion, but it goes, all of our reports, the Department of Revenue have been completed, so we have a complete look on FY 2024, and we'd be happy to make a presentation to the subcommittee about some of the trends, some of the things to watch out for in the future, and the like. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Counselor Robinson, Senator Finance Subcommittee, motion by Counselor Coro. All the affairs, AI, applause, motion passes. The motion to accept all reports and responses, place them on file by Counselor Janes, second by Counselor Yem. All the affairs, AI, applause, motion passes. Six point three, Communication, Resignation of Katie Aronoff from the Library Board of Trustees. Motion to accept, place them on file by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Noon. All the affairs, AI, applause, motion passes. We have two remaining votes from the City Manager. Seven point one, Vote to Accept Expendment One Hundred and Nine Thousand Three Hundred and Fourteen Dollars and Two Cents, Burn State Crisis 7.1, Vote to Accept Expend $109,314.2, Burn, Burn State Crisis Intervention Program Award, with a full reading and second reading by title. Authorize the City Manager, behalf of the City of Lowell, to accept an expanded grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security regarding the Burn State Crisis Intervention Program Award, in the amount of $109,314.2 to be used by the Lowell Police Department. Motion to accept by Council Noon, second by Council Robinson, roll call, Mr. Clerk. Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Belanger.
Yes.
Uh, Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
Council Getchier.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
11 years. 9, Report Subcommittee, 9.1, Nonprofit Organization Subcommittee, February 4th, 2025, Chairman Getchier.
held on February 4th, 2025, and the city council chambers present were Councilmember Noon, Member Counselor Robinson, Member Counselor Mercier, and Counselor Belanger. The subcommittee invited Levi Dennis from Community Connections to provide information on Community Connections organization. Mr. Dennis outlined many programs from community involvement with meal giveaways at Thanksgiving, during the holidays, to community basketball tournaments, and many other events. The energy in the room from the Lowell High School students who were members of the community, there were four of them here, and they were members of the Community Connections, was based on testimony of dedication from the staff at Community Connections. They outlined the many benefits and also asked for help getting the information out to others. Community Connections this year alone, at a backpack giveaway for back-to-school event, handed out 200 backpacks to families in need. They asked for one thing from the subcommittee, and all were in agreement. Um, they asked that the manager and, would reach out, if they could reach out to the manager and sit down with him and just find a way that they could get more involved in the community and actually promote their events through either social media, through the city, or through in, or through the, um, school department. And Mr. Dennis asked that, uh, maybe they could use the city website, or they could find help from anybody. If they, the city manager and his staff could please get in touch with Mr. Levi and Community Connections, um, that would be phenomenal for him and his staff. They're trying to grow a program that's really beneficial to our community. And if anybody would like to join Community Connections or reach out to them, uh, they can be reached, the Community Connections, all one word, at ma.org. Thank you.
See, here we are here. Motion to accept the report, report of progress by Council Dakota, second by Council Getchier, all the fair say aye, opposed motion passes. Section 10 petitions, 10.1, five property damage claims. Motion to refer to Law Department for report of retardation by Council Janess, second by Council Mercier, Council Getchier.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. As you read through these, you see there's a lot of potholes on Chelmsford Street. It seems like that was the whole thing. Mr. Manager, could you just update us if they got fixed? Because there were multiple dates, it looks like the same area of Chelmsford Street, and just see if, uh, they were fixed so that we don't keep getting the same claims. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Uh, boy, three weeks ago, we were doing great. And then all, all of a sudden, the last, uh, three weeks, they're popping up left and right due to this weather. And I will ensure that Chelmsford Street was looked at. Um, and, um, we are in full alert. I just want to let, let everybody know. Uh, really, honestly and truly, it's, this last three weeks has really done a number on our roadways. So, and I encourage the councilors, if they see it, when they see it, let us know, and we'll make sure that gets out.
The one on Chelmsford Street near the 99 has been filled. That was the big, that was the big one.
That's the big problem. Uh, Mr. Machado's been on that, personally saying that he'll go out and help fill if need be.
So, the, the only thing that I'd like to add to it is, and I know that this is part of your program, because we're doing spot paving in the spring and everything. If we can just write down these areas, and if we're not going to get the full road, that we can cut out areas, again, like you did last year, through that program and just outline with the DPW, um, those areas, because I think you did a phenomenal job on Stevens Street. I don't get that call of that one pothole, because you guys took care of it on the corner, Norcross and Stevens, where it was next to the manhole, and it seemed like it was there every single week we'd get a call on it. So, if we can do that spot paving again on these areas where we're getting these big issues.
Mr. Manager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Uh, Council Scott and I were just talking about this today. Uh, it, it is my hope by tomorrow, I'm going to have a preliminary list for the councilors to look at in regards to all of the property, excuse me, all of the streets we'll be doing this year. Uh, we've also looked to increase our, Council Getchier, uh, localized paving, uh, which will go 100 feet in either direction in those tough areas where it just seems that it's consistent. So, uh, this is, once again, due to the fact that this council has been very aggressive. Uh, by the end of 2025, I'm probably going to go out on a limb, and I probably shouldn't, but we'll be close to, uh, I believe, $30 million in, in horizontal construction. Uh, and I know that gives a little angst to my CFO, but, um, if everything goes well and the, uh, weather cooperates with us throughout the spring, summer, and into the fall, we'll be probably looking in the last two and a half, three years, close to $13 million of bringing our roadway, all of our horizontal construction up to, to snuff, and that is because of the, uh, 11 councilors here that are, that are allowing us to do this work. So, I thank you, but that localized paving has been a lifesaver, something that we've implemented in the last two years.
And I think it's extremely important to reach out to, to the solicitor, because that's where all the claims go. So, I think it gives you the whole platform of the areas that really need this help. I know people don't see as much because it's not a full road, but it does prevent a lot of these issues and frees up the solicitor's time to do actually real law work. So.
If, if people could just please bear with us, this is, once again, exploded over the past three weeks, just simply because of the weather that we've been going through. And I, and I know you all know this, but, uh, our DPW workers are out, they're working their tails off to keep this up, and, uh, hopefully, there'll be no snow on Thursday.
All the fair say aye, opposed, uh, passes. 11 announcements, any announcements this evening? I do have a couple. Uh, first of all, this weekend is flag raising. Uh, but the Lithuanian flag has been canceled, they're going to reschedule. Uh, the Lowell High School Walk Through is this Saturday at 11:00 AM. Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, front of the high school, main, main entrance, this Saturday, 11:00 AM. And finally, I sent the email out a few weeks ago, um, we need three volunteers for the Lowell Folk Festival Ad Hoc Subcommittee. Anybody want to volunteer now or get back to me? So, Council Noon, Council Janess, Council Belanger, welcome aboard, thank you very much. Catch, Mr. Manager. That's right, yeah. That was, that was perfect. Motion, motion to adjourn by Council Mercier, second by Council Janess, good night.